I'll call the commission meeting to order Thursday, November 14th. And Secretary, please call the robe.
Western Commissioner Hoey Blue.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Present.
President of Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Present. You all are going with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Great way to start out. It's a beautiful morning. Okay, so the next item of business is to approve the consent agenda. We do have some approval of last meeting minutes. We do have some minutes that we're going to approve today. We have closed session minutes that was done on 10:31. We have open and closed meeting minutes, 11:08 and 11:13. We also have some financials. We have the October financial report. Is that correct, Mandy?
The auditor's monthly report for October.
Auditor's monthly report for October. And we also have a financial on the collection of Rhode and Bridge sales tax and how we disperse it between Common Road One and Common Road Two. So we have those financials. We have three items on the agenda today. And I'd like to move the first one to be the Resource Management Director, Wyson-Hahn. I've got a gentleman that needs to leave after that presentation. So everything will be the same except we'll move number two item up to number one, put number one item up to number two, and then we'll spend the rest of the time working on our 2025 budget presentation missed in. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Make that motion, sir.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay, so Mr. Todd, if you want to come up here and explain what we've got going on with what we do with planning zoning and has to do with the county and the city working together.
So, trust me, you have a copy of the amendments that I gave you, right?
Uh huh.
Okay. So let's go through it. Basically, this is about protecting our groundwater recharge areas. Carst topography, that includes sinkholes, losing streams, and caves. They can be found throughout Christian County. We all know this. But not all carst areas are alike. Some areas, the features may be spread out or might be located far from where we created human development. While in other areas, there might be numerous sinkholes and other features, they're located in a relatively small, compact area around where houses are being built or businesses are being established. This combination presents a greater risk of pollution entering our groundwater and jeopardizing the quality of our drinking water and the natural environment. The county staff has been working with their colleagues over at the city of Ozark. We have a shared goal of developing regulations for our community which would provide enhanced protection of our groundwater resources in those areas which are shown to be extremely vulnerable. So in doing so, there are some guiding principles that we try to keep in mind. Our challenge was not only to support the level of protection being proposed by the city on their end, but to do so with the following things in mind. We wanted to develop a policy which will work within the established framework and mechanisms currently utilized within our own zoning regulations. We wanted to create a regulatory mechanism which could be replicated and applied in multiple areas. We're not talking about just the city or a particular singular issue. We need to be able to respond throughout the entire county. And then thirdly, to utilize some increased protection requirements that are both practical and can actually be implemented and enforced with respect to the county's level of staffing and the level of authority that's provided to us through the state statutes. So in constructing this regulation, we need to remember the county has existing protections in place to help protect our groundwater. The increased protections need to be applied in areas which are truly vulnerable. Those areas of environmental sensitivity can be geographically defined, and the public should have an opportunity to provide input before added regulations are put in place in those areas. So by creating a new type of overlay district, I believe we can utilize an existing mechanism and accomplish the goal that we've set out. Our zoning regulation currently contains three overlay districts. We've got a floodplain overlay district, which is the area that's the defined floodplain. We have the urban service area overlay district, and we have some transportation overlay districts. This amendment would create another overlay district called the Groundwater Recharge Protection Area, the GRPA overlay district. So in order to make this work, it requires two amendments to our existing regulation. The first one would be to Article Three, which is districts and district boundaries. In that section, it covers the overlay districts themselves. They're essentially defined geographic areas which have certain characteristics or attributes for which additional regulations are applied. So the proposal of the addition of a new overlay district, let's say the area that is of concern currently around the city of Ozark, would be treated like an amendment to the regulation. We would have a study presented to the G and Z Commission where we agree that there's documented study and support that requires that we go ahead and adopt this or at least discuss it before we do. So in this case, the GRPA would be identifying a specific area which has been studied and identified as being highly vulnerable to pollutants entering our groundwater supplies. The boundaries of that area would be determined, and we would adopt that area as a overlay district and add it as part of the regulation. So the second amendment, which would be to add Article 47.5, we have an Article 47, we have an Article 48, but we wanted to squeeze it in between. So 47.5 is what we did. And it's got multiple sections. I've provided a copy to you. In Section One and Two, it explains the intentions of the regulation and the reasoning for why this is of importance. In Section Three, it provides a list of definitions relevant to the article. Try to keep our definitions consistent with our other regulations like those found in our storm waters and erosion control regulations. They are similar, not entirely identical to the definition you might find in the ordinance that the city is proposing, but generally, they fall in line very well. In Sections Five and Seven, those relate to the land use regulation. Section Five, for instance, prohibits the change in zoning of parcels within a defined GRPA to commercial or manufacturing. So in those areas, for instance, you would not be able to rezone to commercial or manufacturing. In Section Five also, it provides the opportunity for a developer to rezone a 20-acre or greater parcel to the conservation development district. And that's a natural fit with regard to protecting groundwater resources. We've really not used this zoning district, but what it does is allows for a developer to create some smaller lots if they set aside a sufficient open area which would naturally protect from pollutants entering a sinkhole or protected area. And Section Seven, it provides a listing of acceptable land uses within the GRPA. And then back to Section Six, that is where it contains the actual development standards which would be observed within the GRPA. We currently have significant protections in place through our zoning regulations and soil and erosion control regulations, and they continue to be applicable. But a comparison here of what we're proposing to what we have would be, as far as setbacks go, in terms of sinkholes within the GRPA, no new development would be permitted closer than 50 linear feet from the map rim of a sinkhole. Currently, our standard setback is 30 feet. As far as USGS blue line streams, no new development would be permitted within 50 feet of the ordinary high water mark of a map stream. Currently, our regulations don't include a specific setback from streams, per se. But in reality, most streams have a floodplain associated with them, so there's already a natural setting back from those. But within the GRPA, regardless of whether there's floodplain or not, things would need to be set back. With regard to erosion and sediment control, the requirements are not very different from our current standards, although within the GRPA, a developer would be specifically required to use sediment basins as a means by which to control and filter sediment from the route. Also, silt fence would not be allowed as a BMP, which is good because silt fence doesn't work very well. In Section Eight, it provides certain exceptions which might apply in special circumstances, and those exceptions are very similar to what is provided for by the city in a comparison of ordinances. So our goal with these regulations is to secure the desired protection on the front end of development before it is established. Really, that's the most practical way to achieve success. If we control where things are developed relative to these sensitive areas on the front end, that's the way you get the most, you know, protection overall of our natural resources. Happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Very good, very good. Any comment or questions?
The only question I have, I know the city of Ozark's been working on this for several years, trying to achieve this goal and get this plan put in place. And now that we're looking at it, has the city of Mexico been looking at this? Any at all we had been?
Have not heard anything from them.
Okay.
By setting this up now, we have a mechanism where if they have...
Because they have a lot of carst topography over there as well.
They do.
So other than that, I appreciate you guys bringing this to us and getting this put in place.
Commissioner Blue, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments.
Okay. Well, I would just say this, that I'm really pleased that this is a combined effort between the city of Ozark and, as Commissioner Jackson said, it's been a few years in the making. I think the county got involved probably around December the eighth of this past year. I was at a function at the venue on the brick, and I saw Councilmember Galloway, and he asked me at that time if the county would be interested in working with the city on a particular problem. And I said, oh, sure, I think we need to always work together. And so I think this is a culmination of several years of work with this last year between December and now. And we took it to the planning zoning, and they worked on it and got the amendments, got this graph together. And I think this is a tremendous, for us, the county is going to protect us if we continue to grow rapidly and everything's going out into the county because there's not much left to develop inside the city limits. We're going to have, continue to see more and more issues and problems, and we need to have it headed off to a gain with us to let these problems go on and on. And so we have Kevin Bright here. It's he and Juanita own Small and Cave, and I don't know whether... Kevin, do you want to make a comment about how important this is, not just to you, but to other people around?
Well, the area, Springfield, over the years, because they developed without any convention or any real knowledge of what was going to happen, the amount of dollars they've spent is astronomical, and they're never going to get it all mitigated. And fantastic coverage, they're kind of under that development that happened up there, especially out there by the airport, and there's things that are never going to be fixed and damage that's been done. And this right here is pretty impressive that the county and the city both came together. The state's also looking at this, and I think this is going to be a precedent. And this is going to be bragging rights for our county and our city to go ahead and do something proactive rather than having to be in the newspapers about how they're being reactive and the money they're spending to mitigate the damage that's been done. So I think it's a very, it is pretty indicative of the cooperation we've got and how the development of Christian County is on a very positive track to go ahead and be an example. I noticed, I don't know if they contacted you, but Dave Woods, who works for Ozark Underground Labs, he's actually, this has been the talk in the Conservation Department. There are actually, there's a lot of conversation, and they're using this as an example of things that they can try to get done in these other areas before these issues come up. But anyway, everybody's got a grin on their face, and they're very excited about the steps that's being taken here. And there's going to be a lot of talk about Ozark and Christian County and that contract that you've come together and made to do this. But I think it's a great thing. I think it's very positive. I think it'll be a good example.
Very good, very good. And so we're going to need a motion. Mr. Todd, is this for the motion on Article 47.5 and the amendments that you just talked about? Is that what we're going to be okaying today?
Yes. We're looking for a motion to amend Article Three of the zoning regulations as presented, and also by adding Article 47.5 as presented. And I would need an effective date. I would suggest to you possibly December 1st.
Okay, okay. So we need a motion for 47.5 and Article Three and effective date, December the first of this year.
I would make that motion to amend Article Three and adopt Article 47.5 effective one December 2024.
Second that motion, sir. Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes three to zero. Good work. I think this is, this is an important thing, both for the county and the city. And for the county, we can use this for all facets of the county. Okay, that's for Monday night?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, good job. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Purchasing Manager Ms. Kim and also our IT Manager, Mr. Bill. Come on up.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning. So this is for a contract renewal. It's the first renewal. It's for RFQ 2023-19 Data Solutions Services to the company CKC Data Solutions. This contract ensures we have qualified vendors for such jobs as network cabling, splicing, bioreuptic cabling, wireless solutions. It goes on and on. This contract is only on an as-needed basis. We have several contracts out there like this. They have done some work for us this year. They are not increasing their prices for 2025, so unless you...
Not that I'm aware of.
And so we recommend that you approve the contract renewal for CKC Solutions.
Very good. You're happy with everything you do?
Yep.
And providing the fee schedule is good?
Yep. Just finished some work up in Paul's office.
Have nothing further.
How's Springfield?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. How's Springfield? Okay. All right, I would accept a motion to approve this renewal. I'll make that motion, sir.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes. Aye, it passes. Thank you. Okay. Here comes a lady with a big stack of paper. So Ms. Dent has been working, it looks like to me, extremely hard on her 2025 budget. They're going to need, if it keeps increasing, you're going to have to have a dolly to bring this stuff in.
So first things first, the only statutory requirement I have today is to lay this on the table and make it available to the public.
Okay.
So that's done.
Well, good news is, we have some people here today. We appreciate everybody that's here, but a lot of people are watching it online. We're live. Every time we have a commissioning, we are live. Thank you. And so they're going to see it today. Also, there's people that always watch it after the fact, and so they can go in anytime and watch our meetings, and so they can see this. But I would encourage the public to come in, and this is going to be on the table what, for 10 days?
10 days.
10 days.
And...
So I would encourage people to come in and check it out.
Or they could simply go to the website. Right before I came down here, I turned, I hit the button, and it's visible to the public.
Perfect. So not only does Ms. Dent have one of the best in the state transparency portals, we also have this budget for 2025 on our transparency portal. And so again, I think that's extremely important for the public to know it's out there. You can see it. So, okay, Ms. Dent.
Okay, this has been an exceptionally challenging budget cycle. We have multiple capital projects, last-minute payroll adjustments, et cetera. So I've kind of decided the theme for this year is everything everywhere all at once.
Yeah.
So our budgeting software is very robust, and it can display data in numerous ways. And it also provides many locations to include narratives to explain spending, fund relationships, et cetera. Unfortunately, with the last-minute payroll adjustments that the commission authorized, I was not able to provide those narratives for this meeting. I had to make a choice, and the numbers were more important than the narrative at this time. So, and I learned of the marijuana sales tax ruling just as I had finished printing all of the copies. So there's already one adjustment that will be made. So those revenues and corresponding expenditures will be removed before we finalize this on January 10th. So if you'll look in your, follow along in your hydnal, we have a table of contents that lists everything. And the first section has everything organized by fund, which is how we have typically seen it, the general revenue, law enforcement funds, et cetera. But if you'll go to the, let's see, page six, one of the, one of the issues that we're facing with some updates that ClearGov is currently working, that was another thing that made things more challenging, is ClearGov decided to overhaul the budgeting software in the middle of our budget process. So one of the glitches right now is it is not pulling forward projected fund balances. So if you look at page six, it looks like we will end the year $8 million in the hole, which is absolutely untrue. But that's just where we are right now. So the second section, which starts on page 199, has everything organized by department. The first 89 pages are all funds lumped together, just a complete comprehensive financial overview. So if you will turn with me to page 289, this is the county operations for general revenue. It is the largest expenditure we have possibly ever had out of this. The highlights, there's $807,000 set aside for emergencies, absolute worst-case scenarios. $2 million has been set aside for the jail sewer project as well as possible land purchases for common two and/or a new jail. I know the sheriff and our highway administrator are always on the lookout for land deals for those projects, and I wanted to make sure we had funds in the budget should the golden opportunity arise. Also, we're budgeting for, to spend a lot of funds that were received in prior years, such as the local area tribal consistency funds from the federal government. That's a little over $168,000 that's going to be spent on Red Bridge. The opioid settlement funds, I don't know how the commission has decided to spend those, but we have about $315,000 budgeted to spend for next year. We have $3.25 million to transfer to the capital projects fund for new campus construction. We anticipate this will be partially replenished by the sale of assets, and if all funds are not needed or if GR is unable to accommodate this, any additional will not be transferred. So it's better to hope for the best and prepare for the worst. And then if you will move on to page 303, this is the county commission budget. And I thought it should be prudent to address the issue, the second line on page 304, which is commission salary other, which if you'll notice shows a 445.5% increase. And that is the result of some restructuring of some employees, changing some things around. It's not necessarily new expenditures, they're just new to this budget. And so I wanted to have that explained because that's a terrifying number to look down and see.
Without, without information, it is.
Yes, without the narrative. It looks like you guys have gone wild. And so then, page 307 is our building capital fund, and this is where the expenditures for the buildings of the new campus are located. It is also where we will be saving money for future building projects. This is where it will be set aside for that. We're currently budgeted to spend $2.8 million out of that. has been in the past, and I firmly believe that our project coordinators can get that spent. And then on page 320 are the special revenue funds. These are designated for, designated sales tax revenue for law enforcement expenses alone. They are used to reimburse general revenue for operating expenses for the sheriff's office and parts of prosecutor's expenses. So rather than paying those directly out of that and getting everything commingled, we've set those aside, and every month they transfer to cover law enforcement expenses. After that, we move on to the individual departments. They show the total expenditures across all funds for offices and departments that have discretionary funds. Those are all accounted in there. On page 351, we have the sheriff's budget, and there is something that he has requested. It is the building and building improvements line item. He has requested $350,000 for the construction of evidence storage facilities and would like to utilize previously received marijuana sales tax funds. I doubt that, with that tax being overturned, I'm not sure how they could claw those monies back because it would be nearly impossible to return them to the people that paid them. But if something like that does happen, we will work together to figure out a way to get that project funded.
So Ms. Amy, I might make a comment, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, but I did talk to Austin Vax, our county attorney, also called Mac up in Jefferson City, and talked to Travis Elliott, our state attorney, yesterday. And while, while we had a setback, the counties had a setback with the Eastern Appeals Court. The Western Appeals Court is still hearing the case, and they, they're about one to two months behind making their final decision. It's probably going to go to the Supreme Court after the 1st of the year, and so we're all going to have to hold tight and see, because I, I checked yesterday, it looked like we had about $228,000 approximately that we have collected since we, the three of us put it on the ballot in April, two years ago. So, so we are accumulating some money, but, but is that going to stop? We don't know. Nobody knows. I have a feeling that the Supreme Court might still reverse that when it gets all the way to there. So we'll see.
As of now, I have to plan that they will not.
Yeah.
I have to go with the actual, I have to take the world as it is, not as we would like it to be.
That's right, that's right, that's fine.
So, and finally, we have the highway department on page 449, because everybody cares about placing roads. And specifically on page 451, the capital request, it's the project, the last line item on there, that is where the funding expenditures for Green, Hawkins, and Red Bridges reside. And that is quite possibly the line item that makes me the happiest, is to have that accounted for and ready to go.
Absolutely.
Those are my highlights.
I appreciate the compiling of all this information in an easy-to-read format here. But keeping, keeping an eye on our budget throughout the year can be difficult sometimes because all the numbers start swirling around. So I appreciate the bringing this and explaining some of the pieces parts. It's one of the great things about our tool, to have it accessible to the public, but when they're just looking at the raw numbers without an explanation. So I appreciate you being here in the room while we're live on YouTube to explain, especially that one where we're doing some restructuring, because that, to the generic eye can be a large, you know, must be a misprint, what in the world are they doing? But it's under control, and I think our organization is going to be stronger because of that restructuring.
And I will, once we leave here, I will start typing up the narratives for each of these funds and point, bringing attention to some of these things, so that when someone goes into our budget book, when it's finally approved, all of the narrative and all the data will have an explanation.
And other than the narrative needing to be here, well, this pretty, is this pretty well set now, based, or at least will be when we vote?
The overall numbers are, if anyone comes with a last-minute request or an additional expenditure, I will require it to be offset by reducing an expenditure somewhere else.
Okay.
So the line items may shift, but the overall numbers are fairly set with the marijuana sales tax.
So the person, Johnny, who will come in to follow me?
I have a copy for him, and he would like to.
Okay, and so this whole thing is not, mid-December, the whole book's not going to be replaced, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll save that too for him and for me in the meantime. Okay, thank you. So Ms. Amy, so I, I do appreciate exactly what Mr. Jackson was saying, so, so I understand this graph for the major projects like the bridges, the three bridges, the stormwater projects, things like that. But where, where is it in here for me to see? I don't see it, first, my eyes are kind of blurry this morning, but, but on, on our amount of money that we're going to be able to spend on, on roads, for this year, we kept it the same as last year. Now what are we going to do for '25? Where's that number at?
That falls under the highway department, which was page 448.
448, okay.
And I believe the line item we're probably looking for is road maintenance and repair, and that falls, and that is In Common 1 and In Common 2. And it looks like we have a type of In Common 1. I will go to our highway administrator and get that straightened out.
It looks like we're going to be able to spend a little bit more money than we did last year on, or this year on roads, on road repair.
No.
No? Because I think that's one of the things that, and of course, we're going to, we're going to be talking after the first year on other ways that we can increase our budget because we're going to be running into a problem. I think that the cost of repair of roads, building roads, things like that, has really taken a jump the last two or three years, and all of a sudden, we're finding ourselves where we're not able to increase the budget, we're able to maintain the budget number from the year previous. And that's going to really start to create a problem in the future. So that's why there'll be things that the commission's going to have to, to decide on here very soon, on how we're going to increase our, our sales tax and things that we, since that's what most of our budget is based on, on how we're going to be able to make sure that the roads are increased, not, not kept the same, or decreased. So, so I think that's going to be something. I just want to make a note that we've got a, a major decision that we're going to have to be making here sooner than later, to, to, we can give more money to, to, to roads, bridges. Everything else, I, I think, I think we're doing pretty good, but that does really worry me about the roads, the condition of the roads, so.
Completely out of my control.
To what?
It's completely out of my control.
I know that. It's not your, it's not your problem. We're going to, we're going to try to fix it.
Spend more money in Christian County.
Yeah, we're going to try to fix it.
So one way to fix it.
Okay.
Yeah, that is a, a small error there.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw it.
I, I will contact our highway administrator.
Yeah, but no.
As soon as I leave here and get that number.
Oh, but that's, very good work, very good.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
No? Okay, well. Ms. Amy, do we need to make any kind of motion today? We're just leaving it on the table for the public to look at?
Just need to make sure it stays there.
Yeah, it will stay there. I'll be watching it.
And not disappear.
Yeah, I thought about trying to get one of those chains like they have at the bank for the pins.
That's what I was thinking, a little cable tie.
We'll have Ms. Kim guarding it, and I will help guard it. And, and I'm hoping, I'm encouraging people to, you know, this is your opportunity. This is a great, I mean, this is a great piece that you put together. So, so I would encourage the public citizens in this county to check it out, and also always check out our transparency portal because it's on there too. And check that out because you can see what we're spending and what we're taking in on a daily basis, and there should not be any surprises. So the public is welcome to see everything that we do. And so I think it's extremely important that they do, okay?
Now, this is, this is a much more detailed and comprehensive document for me to look at than my previous, I guess, employer, you know? This is much more detailed, and it's kind of nice to be able to look and break it down to a more finite position, so.
Okay, okay. I think the next item on the agenda is, is communications. Do you, is either one of you have any communications that, that we want to make? I've got a couple of things I want to say, but. None? Okay, I'll, I'll just say this, I've got, I've got a handout, and Ms. Amy, I got one for you too, because I knew we, so, so there's Bradley, and there's.
It's like Christmas.
And then, and here's one from Maddie too, so we'll give one to Amy too. So what this is, communication, is what, what Ms. Amy was talking about a while ago, we've taken this out of the budget for the marijuana 3% sales tax that was being collected, that the amendment, 3, I believe it was, that was passed, that we were able to collect that sales tax. And now they're saying that it's not, it didn't say whether the city can do it, the county can do it, it says you can't stack the taxes. I think about everything you buy is, is stacked because there's local taxes, there's state taxes, there's all kinds of taxes added to everything, but all of a sudden, they're saying that you can't do marijuana. So that's information from, from, that I've compiled in the last day since I heard that. Another thing, I wanted to just make sure that, that, I think Maddie, I think we sent you an email yesterday, but on the week of Thanksgiving, you know, Thanksgiving's on Thursday, we're going to be off on Friday, you and I are going to be at the Mac conference on Monday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. So, so Wednesday is the day that we can do a commission meeting. That Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, is, is one that we could do if someone needs to have a commission meeting that week. That's the only time that we could be, do it, because we're going to be at a meeting on Monday and Tuesday, and Thursday and Friday, we're gone, so.
I think it's, from what I understand from Ms. Paula, I think it's going to be best just not to have a meeting.
Well, that could be, but I'm just letting people know that if there's.
We let them know now that there's an emergency.
Yeah.
Before or after, but that, that we're all going to end, and it puts an unnecessary strain on that office to provide what's needed there, I think.
That'd be fine, but I mean, when people call down here and they say they have to have something done, that's the only day it can be done, so.
I'll take that off there and say it's not the only day, and ask them to wait the next week.
Okay.
But that's just my thought.
Okay.
And bring it, bring it sooner or later.
Sooner or later, there's time.
Okay, well, and maybe we should just send that out, notice out again, letting people know it's either going to be sooner or later, and just where we don't get pressure put on us.
I think that's a good idea.
So I think we can do, maybe that we can get that accomplished, and, and other than that, I think, I think that's what I've got.
All right.
Any other things that we need to talk about?